It's time to call our joint meeting to order for the city council and the Brown County Commission. And Rachel, you have a quorum. And Carl, we need a roll call, please.
Councilmember Remley.
Here.
Ronain.
Here.
Lunsman.
Here.
Slate Hansen.
Johnson.
Here.
Bunsonis.
Here.
Olson.
Rux.
Here.
Mayor Leveson.
Here.
Join us in pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, we have just one item presented for possible second reading. Brad, anything new come up on this?
No changes from last week.
Entertain a motion from the city then for second reading and final adoption.
So moved.
Second.
Motion Ronain, second by Bunsonis. Questions from the council? Roll call, Carl, please.
Councilmember Remley.
Aye.
Ronain.
Aye.
Lunsman.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
Bunsonis.
Aye.
Rux.
Aye.
Mayor Leveson.
Aye.
Motion carries. Rachel.
On the county side, ordinance four, seven, five, rezone. Would entertain a motion to approve?
So moved. Second.
We've got a motion as second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Close name. Motion carries.
Move to adjourn.
Motion is second. Second in form. Fishback. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Close name. Motion carries. Thanks for hosting us.
Thank you.
Won't be long, it'll be at our place.
Too soon. Next on the agenda, I need a motion to approve last week's minutes.
So moved.
Motion Bunsonis, second by Johnson. If there are no changes, all in favor of approving, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, no. Motion carries. We have one person signed up for open forum tonight. Nick Kukla, you have the floor. If the green light comes on, it's on, and you're welcome to have a seat there.
Thank you for the opportunity to speak to you. My name is Nick Kukla. I've been a resident of Aberdeen, South Dakota for 19 years. In fact, when I retired, my wife and I elected to do our retirement in Aberdeen. My idea of retirement was a little A-framed log cabin up in the hills. That was not her idea. What I wish to speak to you tonight is about snow. And I picked the perfect day to do it, didn't I? It was a 77 when I left the house. But I want to speak to you a little more specifically about snow gates. I have spoken with a city official three times in the last two years in regard to this matter, more specifically, an elected official. Each time, the only answer I could get was that the city of Sioux Falls was mandated to put them in place by initiated referendum of the people. They hate them. I will let you answer this question for yourself. Who hates them? A handful of people in the city hall or 182,000 people in the city proper of Sioux Falls? That is about 21% of the population of South Dakota. I am not sure if any of the little surrounding areas around Sioux Falls have that service or not. I am given another reason that we use private contractors in our snow removal process, and that we would also have to implement them with snow gates. I don't believe that's true. Because when we plow our streets, we make four passes, two down the middle, one on each side of the curb. We could continue to use the independent contractors to make the two passes down the middle. We could follow up with city plows with snow gates and do the outside passes. Quite simple. Now, just a couple weeks ago, there was an article in the paper saying that in the Dakotas, Sioux Falls was the only city that used snow gates. And again, they hate them. Well, I'm a North Dakota native, and I do know that Minot was the first to implement them in North Dakota. That's maybe been 15 years or more ago. I know that Jamestown, North Dakota, has had them in use for over 10 years. And that comes from one of your employees, Robin. He came from Jamestown.
That's correct.
Okay. Bismarck, North Dakota, has them. Devil's Lake, North Dakota, has them. And then I come to find out that my little hometown of Killer, North Dakota, population 1,500, uses snow gates. Now, I was, the question was raised to me, you'd name me five towns, what percent of the towns is that in North Dakota? Pretty small amount. But that's not the point. The point is, how many citizens in the state of North Dakota are served by these snow gates? And if you add up the populations of these five towns, you're going to be well above the 21% in Sioux Falls. It's not a matter of the number of cities, it's a matter of how many citizens we serve. Now, we've had three open winters in the last three years. I don't believe any one of these winters we have plowed more than three times. That should have left a very good surplus in the snow removal fund. Now, I realize that two years ago, the two past years, we can't do nothing about. Because that money has moved into the general fund in October, sometime in there.
Beginning of the year.
Beginning of the year. But how about the money we have this year left over? Can we start something to begin work on putting snow blades on some of our plows, snow gates? I think we can. Now, the one thing that I found of interest in the city of Devil's Lake is they operate two maintainers with snow gates, and then they operate two payloaders with front blades and snow gates. To me, operating these front-end loaders with the blade in the front would be, in my experience, a much more feasible way to go. Because you've got that blade out front, and you can see what you're doing. I always get quite a laugh because from my house, I can watch the intersection of Dakota Street and 18th Avenue. And when the plow is getting ready to come down 18th Avenue, it takes about three to five minutes, he sets the angle of the blade, he sets it up and down, and then he takes off like hell. And I'm willing to bet, he doesn't touch any of those levers till he hits the end in the next intersection. So what do I see? I see in places pavement gouged, I see in places, snow not removed. I don't think we have experienced operators. Maybe the independent contractors are. And probably, it's not feasible to have just so-called maintainer operators. But I don't think you put a truck driver in a snow plow. I guess the only reason I'm here tonight is to really determine what has been presented to you in terms of snow gates, the costs, the feasibilities, as a commission. Has this been discussed with you? Has this been brought to you? That's why I'm here tonight, to try to get an answer to that question. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Good. You know, if I could, I'd be heard on that mic. I did invite Nick to come talk to us last week when we chatted. You know, I for one, I don't ever remember any conversation about this, and maybe there have been conversations about snow gates before I joined the council almost five years ago. But I would, I would like to know whether it's feasible, and I don't need an answer now. And Robin, I think, I'd rather know numbers and things like that.
Sure.
And it may be something that we can't afford to do, but I would like to, I guess I'd like to hear about. Is it, would that be possible, Lynn?
Oh, yes. We've never been asked a question before to do a feasibility study with snow gates. And we do have some items that are a little different, that may create different circumstances. He talked about, you know, our workforce. A portion of it, we do hire out, and then a majority portion of our snow equipment, we lease up. And so, you know, I don't know what the circumstances would be in reference to additional cost to ask for a snow gate, not a leased piece of equipment, if they would allow it. Because you're actually cutting holes within the wallboard, and so I don't know how they react to that. But we also know that it extends the time. Approximately 10 years ago, we went through the two-day snow removal down to a day. But we did an in-depth analysis when we presented the two-day to a day. And so, we could do a like analysis and give it to you, but I can't have that done in a couple of weeks.
And, you know, I don't think it's going to snow in a couple of weeks.
You never know.
At the point, I'd like to make it, now is the time to be talking about it, and now about snow.
You know, I'm, I'm okay with getting some information, but we've gone through this quite a bit. Snow removal has been a hot topic since, I mean, before we even got on this commission, council. But the input that I get was, we need to speed this up. And that's, when Lynn came, we went to, from two-day to one day, and it seems to have cut the complaints to me, oh, they're gone. And I know we've gotten some, you know, some responses, maybe from Robin, that it speeds up time, and that it'll cost us time to do this, and it's going to be more expensive. We haven't put the heart, you know, the numbers to it, and I understand that. But a big factor for me is when you have a big manufacturing company asking you to come talk to them about snow removal, and how we can speed this up. I don't want to go backwards. So, I'm okay with doing an analysis, but I, you know, time is going to be a factor.
There's, there's going to be a lot of different factors you're looking at. The amount of time it takes, Sioux Falls has a little different approach to it. I've talked several times with their public works director. They've got a little different approach to things, and if you see what they did in the last snow removal, I believe they didn't use them because the snow was too heavy, and so they had to abandon the use. And therein lies part of the issue, is that it's only something that's good for a certain range of snow, and once it gets beyond that, actually, that's where the phone calls get generated, is when you're trying to use them, and people are expecting that they be used, and the guys are using them, and, but the snow's just boiling over the top. And it was creating a problem where it would actually leave more of a mess on the street, because you were damming it up to prevent it from going into the driveway. But those are all sidebar things. We can come up with some numbers. I can, I've had several discussions with Bismarck. Obviously, I had experience in Jamestown. My son is in Minot now with the Public Works Department. There's a lot of resources that we have that we could find out what their current experience is, and go from there and give you some numbers along with it. So, be happy to put that together.
Thank you.
If I remember correctly, Sioux Falls doesn't use them everywhere, though, right?
I can't tell you that. I don't know what their criteria is.
I thought that was the case, Clint. I didn't think it was.
I have a friend who, I spent a lot of time in Sioux Falls, because I have some friends there, and they live in the southwest part of town. They've never seen a snow gate. They usually get their streets plowed with truck plows, which creates different issues altogether. Because, you know, now they're not applying any downforce, so they're leaving, basically.
Gift.
Yeah, it's just ice all over, over the road. They've never seen a snow gate. They've never, they always have had to go out and clear their driveways, just like anyone else. And I don't think it is a regular thing, because I don't think you can have enough equipment to plow a town of 182,000 people and use motor graders throughout the whole town. I, like I say, he's, I can tell you there, I've driven there after a snow, and they actually didn't even see a plow. And it was a 10-inch snow.
Dave, I think you and I and Robin are the only ones in here that went through this when we really, really looked at it. Oh, maybe 12 years ago. Were you here by then? Okay, so, we did look at it pretty extensively. I know our, our Class One mayors of the cities in South Dakota, there's 16 or 17 of us, and I think two have used the snow gates, the others have looked at it and decided it wasn't the wisest thing to do.
And Spearfish, I believe.
Spearfish in Sioux Falls, I think that's it.
Well, Spearfish, I don't think use snow gates. I think they go and clean it out with different types of equipment. They'll follow the blades up. So it's a different operation than a snow gate.
Actually, Spearfish pushes it to the center, waits for it to melt.
It's been a subject of discussion at our, at our Class One mayor's meetings. And other than the Sioux Falls people doing it after the vote, the presumption of the mayors and the, and the operation of all the other cities is they've looked at it and decided against it, as we have to this point. So, so, thanks for coming. Take a look at it.
Thanks, Dave.
Next on our agenda is old business. And the first item is offered for second reading, ordinance to rezone. Anything new, Brad?
No changes from last week.
Ordinance 180401, we need a motion for final adoption.
So moved. Second.
Motion Lunsman, or Rux, second by Lunsman. Any questions from the council on this one? Roll call then, please, Carl.
Councilmember Remley.
Aye.
Ronain.
Aye.
Lunsman.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
Bunsonis.
Aye.
Rux.
Aye.
Mayor Leveson.
Aye. Motion carries. Item B, would entertain a motion for second reading and final adoption of ordinance 180409 relating to restrictions in service of municipally distributed water.
So moved.
Second.
Motion Johnson, second by Bunsonis. The city attorney informs me, he has, what he is proposing be offered as an amendment here for second reading.
Councilmembers, I would ask that a motion be made to amend section 54-30 sub E4. As you can see, I've got the red line version on the screen. Would request that the word planning be stricken, and public works be substituted in its place. That what, there's a water, private water source registry that has been going on for several years, and we'd like to make sure that that's with the proper department. So that's the only change that I've requested.
So moved.
Second. Motion Ronain, and second by Johnson to amend, as just described by the city attorney. Questions on the motion to amend?
I have a question. Now, is this true that any city official can write a ticket?
No. No. Not a, not a ticket.
Okay.
We've expanded the people that would be witnesses essentially to a citation, but the actual, but the police officer, our, our law enforcement officers are the ones who actually write a ticket at the time. But we've expanded the people who would be witnesses, and would sign that ticket as well.
Okay, so, if a city official goes up to an old lady watering her tulips or something, then he would, and it's restricted time, then this person would then call the police department, and then have them issue a ticket? Is that how that works?
We should, actually, right now, we're, the amendment is just to change this, this word.
Oh, on the amendment. Okay.
So let's vote on that first, and then back to you.
Okay.
Any questions on, on the amendment? All in favor, then say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, no. Motion carries. Mark, back to you.
Okay, well, I'm just, I'm just wanting to eliminate the possibility of somebody giving a little old lady a ticket for not knowing that there's water restrictions on that. I mean, if she's just watering her flowers or something like that, I mean, I mean, that, to me, that's unreasonable.
This is a, not that I've been doing this job for a long time, but I haven't seen anybody get cited yet for the water restrictions. And that's something that, I think ordinarily, they will work with that property owner to remind them that there's a restriction in place.
We will do, we will do a courtesy call to those property owners to make sure that they understand that there is an ordinance against this. And if we start seeing abuse of that, then that's when, when the complaint's going to go in. It's not the immediate thing. There, there are dozens of people right now that have, not unbeknownst to them, they do not know that their system is programmed wrong. Okay? It's that courtesy call that gets them to have their irrigation people reset their system and get it to the right time.
All right, that's fine.
Usually a neighbor.
Yeah, a bad neighbor.
Yeah, yeah. Could be, yep. Any other questions, then, on the main motion for second reading? Carl, please.
Councilmember Rux.
Aye.
Bunsonis.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
Lunsman.
Aye.
Ronain.
Aye.
Remley.
Aye.
Mayor Leveson.
Aye. Motion carries. Thanks. Next is our consent calendar, routine city business items A through D.
So moved.
Second.
Motion Ronain, and second by Remley. Questions on any of them? All in favor of approving, then say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, no. Motion carries. Under new business, this is the appointed time for a two-day liquor license for the Downtown Association Better Blocks Project, May 11th and May the 12th.
Move.
Second.
Motion Remley, and second by Rux. Questions on this at all? All in favor, then say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, no. Motion carries. Item B, this is the appointed time for hearing on an application for a new retail on-off sale wine license for Arrow Plus Pinned LLC, doing business at 322 South Main Street. Anyone here to speak in opposition to this? If not, need a motion from the council?
Moved.
Second.
Motion Ronain, second by Remley. Questions on this at all? All in favor of approving the application, then say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, no. Motion carries. Next, item C on the agenda, a temporary easement with Manor Care for the 8th Avenue project. Robin?
The 8th Avenue project has required the, the closure of the two front accesses to Manor Care, and we needed to get them access one way, shape, or another. Obviously, ambulances and delivery trucks and staff, whatever. So we're bringing them in off of 5th Street. The paperwork has been signed, we're just trying to follow up now to make sure that they get paid for their inconvenience.
Move, approve. Second. Motion Remley, second by Johnson. Any questions on it? All in favor of granting that, then say aye.
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 Oppose, no. Motion carries. Next, item D, a U.S. Geological Survey Joint Funding Agreement for Continued Groundwater Modeling. And Bob, you're here, why don't you just briefly tell us what we're doing here?
This is the continuation of the groundwater modeling study we've been conducting to develop a map for the model of further, so we can further get well sources for the city.
So the, the request is to approve the joint funding agreement. Need a motion for that.
Moved. Second.
Motion Bunsonis, second by Rux. Any questions on the agreement, what we're doing?
How much longer do we have in this?
I believe this is the last year of it.
Okay.
Other questions? If not, all, all those in favor of joining the agreement, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, no. Motion carries. Thanks. Next, from Robin and Stuart, recommendation on bids for the 2018 Mill and Overlay Project. Robin?
You have the bid tab in front of you. There's multiple, you'll see that, that there's one base bid, that is our normal Mill and Overlay. Alternate A, I believe, is for the water treatment plant. Alternate B, we're doing some, some stuff out by, I think there's one out by the AGP plant. We're doing some repairs on the overpass. Each one of these has a little different funding source, and the prices are attractive, and we have the money budgeted to be able to do what we need to do to take care of everything this year, so.
Moved. Second.
Motion Bunsonis, and second by Johnson. Any questions on this one? All in favor of awarding that bid, then, to lean transportation, the amount of $842,005. Say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, no. Motion project, or motion approved. The next is the 2nd Street Signal Project, which, a change order and subsequent payment request for that. Robin?
Okay. The pay request is for $43,000. We have paid out a little bit, basically, for materials, start on site, and they are making great progress right now. The overall project was a $200,000 project, and I'm just looking at what we had on the change order. And that was just for the sawing for, for this, and it was a missed bid item when we put it together. So, everything's in order, and we recommend approval.
Move to approve.
Second.
Motion Johnson, and second by Lunsman. Change order $6,800. The payment $43001. Questions at all? Carl?
Councilmember Remley.
Aye.
Ronain.
Aye.
Lunsman.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
Bunsonis.
Aye.
Rux.
Aye.
Mayor Leveson.
Aye. Motion carries. Item G is bills presented for payment tonight. Wellmark Insurance Payment, $134,000. Nationwide Employment Benefits, May Payment for Dental Insurance, $97. MetLife May Premium and May Cobra Vision Payment, $549. Liability for fire suits and cabins, $328 Payment to South Dakota Public Assurance Alliance, ETS Corp. Merchants' Fee for the Finance Office, $1,250. Credit Card Merchants' Fees to Dakota Bank for the Parks and Rec, $3,700. Credit Card Merchant Fees to Park and Rec to Plug and Pay for $1,000. And from Park and Rec to Infant Tech of $1,000. Verizon Wireless Airport Phone Charges, $31. A Finance Office Payment to Matt Parrott relating to utility bills and disconnect notices, $1,166. Tax Audit Assessment of $4,727 to U.S. Treasury, AT&amp;T Cell Phone Charges, $980. UPS Charges, $153. And a payment to Dakota Supply Group for Pipe, $200,206.
Moved. Second.
Motion Bunsonis, and second by Rux. Questions on any of those? Carl?
Councilmember Rux.
Aye.
Bunsonis.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
Lunsman.
Aye.
Ronain.
Aye.
Remley.
Aye.
Mayor Leveson.
Aye. Motion carries. Item H is payroll from April 15 to 28, City Sheriff's Social Security, Old Age Survivors Retirement and Health and Life.
Moved.
Second.
Motion Ronain, second by Remley. Carl?
Councilmember Remley.
Aye.
Ronain.
Aye.
Lunsman.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
Bunsonis.
Aye.
Rux.
Aye.
Mayor Leveson.
Aye. Motion carries. Lynn?
I have nothing to add this evening.
Anybody else?
One quick thing. We were talking about that pass to go north off of Fairgrounds Road. Has there been any talk, or about what's going to happen with that, on Dakota?
There's additional subdivision that will be coming in in the near future. And we were waiting to see what their final plans were, because it was going to be north of that existing area. And so, Robin was waiting to find out what the final was, to see if in fact, we could incorporate that into the extension, so it could be done all at the same time. And you just met with the engineer, what, last week?
same time. And you just met with the engineer, what, last week?
We've met with him a couple of times in the last week.
Okay, and so it is going to be a project for this year, but we, it's going to be done through our, our own workforce, and we're just going to have to plug it in at a certain time and go forward.
Good.
But up until this point, we didn't really know what was going to happen until we found out more information about that new subdivision that's coming in, which would be north of the existing subdivision that wanted, uh, the trail system.
And it'll go up to that, that area, too, right?
We're thinking we'd like to incorporate it all at the same time.
Makes sense.
But construction will determine what happens there.
Sure. One of the issues is, we don't want to put something in that's going to be driven across and, and, you know. Destroyed. Yeah, so we're, we're trying to figure out how best to approach it without having to redo things twice sometimes.
Okay. Anyone else with anything?
Move to adjourn.
Second. Uh, motion, Bunzness, second by Johnson, to adjourn. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Where adjourn?